It's regular meeting of the Navasota City Council's called to order on this 13th day of May in council chambers. Let the record show all council members are present with the exception of council member Peterson. Welcome and thank you for being here this evening. We ask that you put your cellphones in the silent mode and reminder to visitors, please sign in. If you wish to speak under visitors' remarks, fill out the form found in the back, state your name and address at the podium as we must document all meeting business and remarks limited to three minutes. Night's invocation will be led by Pastor Mac Vaughn then followed by the pledges.
It's a wonderful day in the neighborhood, isn't it? I pray. Oh gracious God, let us settle from the stresses of the day and the week that we might have focused on what's needed to be done this evening. God, our hearts go out to those that are in need, especially the warring communities all over this world. God, we just ask that you fill us with your spirit, that all of the new regime that is sworn in this evening is just filled with your spiritual grace, God, and your direction on all the decisions that will be discussed and made. We thank you for those who take care of us. We thank you for those veterans that have died and will celebrate Memorial Day. We thank you for all of our law enforcement and all the things that they do day in and day out. And we thank fire department for their business and how they go about it, God. We just ask that we continue to encourage our city and those who lead it, that we reduce our verbiage from negativity to positive words of encouragement. Oh God, just show us how to be the people that you've called us to be, as you call us to love one another. It's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Honored in Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
Marks of visitors, we have John Sanders.
I would say good afternoon to the council.
That's what's on the paper. That's what's on the paper, John Sanders.
Yes, sir.
You shoot?
Yes, sir. Okay.
Are you done?
She redid it. She redid my paper. What did, what did it say? What do it say? What do the names say?
John Sanders.
No, I'm talking about on the first part of it. Is this yours here? Did you send that? Take a minute of my time and read the paper. You ain't got to read it out loud. Is this yours? I'll bag you there.
Okay.
Is that Navasota's? That belongs to you? You sent that to me?
We did back in...
You sent that to me? That's all I asked you.
We did a proclamation in 2015, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I came right, uh, some, uh, two months ago. You send your water people down there to check my streets, our streets. I think we got five houses down there. We don't have no walkway, but I didn't worry about the walkway. I just want the ditch is clean. They came down there and dug a hole and made it wetter. And man, and water, I don't know how bad it rained. I just got back from the hospital seeing about my brother and my sister-in-law. It's water already there. I don't know how hard it rolled, but I appreciate it. They told me that the boss was gone on vacation and he'd look at it. So they came down there and just dug around the gutters, put a hole. And if, right now, if you go down the street, if you're city council or whoever you are that run our city, go down there and look at that. You'll see no ditch has been dug in 25 years down there, you know? And I don't have to get nobody to come with me to make my point, sir. That's all I want y'all to know. You know, I ain't ask nobody to come. I come to y'all myself. I appreciate what y'all doing. But I appreciate it, y'all just get to come down there and look at them streets.
Mr. Weeks will definitely look in.
They got trash and all that stuff down there. Y'all go down there and get that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
What's the address?
Uh, 113 Clayton and 115...
No address, I put my two miles.
113 and 115.
Okay.
Clayton.
Thank you.
Kathy Cave Wells? Oh, you wanted to talk to Adam 17. I'm sorry.
Yes, I was gonna say...
I wasn't even paying attention. I'm sorry, I can call you back.
Okay.
Apologize for that. Okay. All right, we have a proclamation for National Skilled Nursing Week, May 12 through 18th. And we're representative in Navasota. We have Navasota Nursing and Rehab and Golden Creek Healthcare and Rehab. We had presented earlier today to Golden Creek, so I think it's Navasota Nursing with us tonight. Anyone with us?
Whereas the week of May 12th through May 18th has been designated as National Skilled Nursing Care Week in observance that honors the dedicated care provided in skilled nursing centers across the nation. This year's theme, Radiant Memories, a tribute to the golden age of radio, celebrates the rich tapestry of stories and experiences of those who reside and work within nursing care centers, recalling an era cherished by many of our community's elders. Whereas skilled nursing care provides a, plays a vital role in delivering compassionate care to America's elderly and individuals with disabilities, celebrates the invaluable contributions of skilled nursing care centers and their staff to the lives of residents and their families. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Burt Miller, Mayor of the City of Navasota, hereby proclaim May 12 through 18, 2024, as National Skilled Nursing Care Week in Navasota and encourage all community members to recognize and participate in activities and events. This week serves as a testament to the essential role that skilled nursing care plays in our communities and in the lives of many individuals and their families. Signed this 13th day of May.
Mayor and council, next we have is introduction of new employees. So HR Director Peggy Johnson is going to come up and introduce several of our new employees.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Miller, council members, tonight I would like to introduce five new employees for the city of Navasota and the dates are ranging from March to April of 2024. First on our list, we have listed Heaven Dominguez. Okay. Heaven Dominguez was hired April the 29th in our financial services department. Heaven Dominguez is the accounting manager for the city of Navasota. Heaven has a strong background in financial, finance, and has previously served as the budget analyst for the city of La Porte. She graduated from University of Houston, Clear Lake, where she earned a bachelor's of science in finance. As an accounting manager, Heaven oversees the city financial operations, manages budgets, and ensures compliance with accounting principles and regulations. She is dedicated to working closely with the city departments to ensure that financial resources are allocated most efficiently and effectively to support the goals and objectives of the city. With her extensive knowledge and expertise in finance, Heaven is well-equipped to provide guidance and support to the city financial team, ensuring that all financial transactions are handled accurately and effectively. I'd like to welcome Mel.
You want to do a photo real quick of each one?
Okay.
Yeah.
Anna Romero was hired on the 29th, April 29th, as our parks and recreation manager in our Parks and Recreation Department. Anna Romero is an experienced park and recreation professional with over 20 years of service. She received a bachelor's of science in recreation, park, and tourism science from Texas A&amp;M University and holds numerous professional certifications. Her certifications include National Recreation and Parks Association, Certified Park and Recreation Professionals, Certified Public Manager, and Acoustic, Aquatic, I'm sorry, Aquatic Facility Operator. She is a member of the Texas Recreation and Parks Society, Texas Amateur Athletic Federation, and Texas Public Pool Council, where she has served on numerous boards and committees. She previously serves the city of McAllen and the city of College Station as a recreation manager, recreation supervisor, community center manager, and acoustic superintendent.
Aquatic.
Aquatic, I'm sorry, aquatic superintendent. I can't see. Excuse me, my glasses. Vision is bad. Also, she has integrated in organizations numerous special events, including the Texas Amateur Athletic Federation, Game of Texas, state conferences, and in her spare time, she loves to spend time with her family and enjoy walking with her dog. Help us, help me to welcome Anna.
Hello. Welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you. Third, I would like to call up Kiontre Hattower. Kiontre Hattower was hired on April the 18th as a park and facility maintenance laborer in the Parks and Facility Department. He was the firstborn son of Byron Hattower and Tanisha Mitchell. He have lived in Grimes County all his life. He currently lives in Anderson, Texas. He graduated from Anderson High School in 2018. Kiontre has three years of experience in lawn and irrigation, working and also working as a ranch hand, coming aboard to Navasota with different work skills from the Ike Duck Work Company. He's a member of First Star Ministry Church. He enjoy rodeoing, roping, ranching, training horses, and all sports. The highlight of his life is his son, Kiontre Hattower Jr., whom he was blessed with four months ago. His motto is to put God first in everything he do. Please help me to welcome Kiontre. Lindeman. I don't know why I get so nervous. Hi, Alex, all right. Alex Lindeman, the city of Navasota hired Alex Lindeman on April the 22nd as a communications operator, dispatching the Navasota Police Communications Department. A native of Bedos, Texas, he graduated from Anderson Shiro High School in May 2023 with 62 class members. After graduation, he was hired as a jailer with the Grimes County Sheriff's Office, starting his law enforcement career. He then decided that telecommunications would further help him with his goal to become a police officer for the Navasota Police Department. Alex enjoy recreational fishing, hunting, and outdoors activities such as boating, woodworking, and metal fabrications. So if you would, please help me to introduce and welcome. Derek Hodge was hired March the 27th as a cadet police officer in the Navasota Police He's from Magnolia, Texas, and he lives in Conroe, Texas with his wife. He comes to the Navasota Police Department with a year experience working for Grimes, working for Grimes County Sheriff's Office. He's working towards a degree in criminal justice through the Houston Community College now, in hopes to transferring to the University of Houston to get his bachelor's degree. He look forward to serving the city of Navasota and working with everyone here. So if you would, please help me to welcome Derek Hodge. I would just like to give everyone a warm hand of applause again and welcome them to the city of Navasota.
Mayor and council, I'm going to have Tiffany Byers, our new community service director, come up and give an update on the library and Parks and Recreation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is always my favorite council meeting to attend because I always have exciting news for you guys. So we're going to be kicking off summer, so our kickoff party for the library will be May 23rd from 4 to 6. The Noon Lions is providing free hot dogs and snow cones. We have the Brazos Valley Master Naturalist that will be coming out and they'll have different booths about wildlife and habitats. We may have a mini petting zoo by a local person here in town who is offered. So we will also have the police cars and the fire trucks to tour. So lots of exciting things will be happening in our parking lot on May 23rd. You can also sign your child up for the summer reading program. They'll receive their reading log for the summer. And if they read 30 minutes a day, Monday through Friday, every week, they can bring that in on Fridays and receive a prize. We have lots of exciting prizes this year. We've got free pancakes, snow cones, frisbees, all kinds of exciting things. And then if they complete all eight weeks of the summer, we have a pizza party and we'll do grand prize drawings. One of those grand prize drawings is a, is a family pass to Splashway. So really excited. We had some great donations from the community members, so excited to kick that off. We also will start our Monday night programs in June and July, and we've got Smokey the Bear coming for his 80th birthday. We have the Wolf Sanctuary coming. We have an exotic animal vet. We've got the fire department coming back out. And then we also have a falcon program coming out this year. So those programs will be on Monday nights in June and July at 5:30. Wednesdays, we're bringing back Wacky Wednesdays, so we're going to do things like making paper airplanes, having water days, doing science experiments, and that'll be on Wednesdays at 1:00 in June and July. And then on Fridays, we're bringing back the Fun Flick Fridays, which will be at 1:00 on Fridays in June and July, and that'll be free movies, free popcorn, and free drinks for the family. So we hope everyone will come out and attend those programs, everything completely free. So we also will have Pets on a Mission coming back, where you will be able to sign up to read with a therapy dog. That was really popular last year, so they will be back. There will be two dates in June and two in July, so pay attention to our Facebook page if you're interested, because those spots will fill really quickly. The Scholastic Book Fair is also coming back, June 6th through the 17th. The book fair has been very popular, and not only that, but those dollars were able to use to order new rugs, order new decorations for the library, and provide programming materials. So we do receive a percentage of those profits, so please come out and support the book fair June 6th through the 17th. Nature Camp is coming back in July, July 8th through the 12th, so that'll be $20, a $20 fee to cover supplies and snacks. Kids can come July 8th through the 12th from 9:00 to 11:00, and they'll learn different things every day. So we have things on habitats, we have things on birds, we do crafts, we play games. It's a good time, but they also get that science learning in. And then moving on to the Parks and Rec side, we have, the swimming pool schedule is out. It's beautiful and colorful, and there are so many activities this year. We are so excited. We had enough lifeguards to add a lot of exciting programming, so you can find that on the city's Facebook page. And so some of the things we'll have coming up, June 20th is going to be Donuts with Dudes. We'll have a special time for children and their favorite male role model to come, and they'll enjoy donuts and an early swim. We've got movie dive-ins, June 28th is Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles, and July 26th is Elemental. For a $5 fee, you come float in the pool and get to enjoy a movie. We also are going to do lap swim this year. We've got, public swim is going to be from May 27th to August 3rd. So a whole lot to say in one night, so just go to the city Facebook page and you can find everything you need there. We also will be coming out with a schedule of events at the Navasota Center. So we have a senior calendar that we'll be putting out this week, as well as hopefully by Friday, we will have a calendar for events. We've got some baking classes coming up, some history lunches, so stay tuned to that city Facebook page and the website, because we have a jam-packed schedule for June and July. One more event, we have June 15th, we are doing a family fishing day at Patu Pond from 9:00 to 12:00, free fishing day, so we'll provide the bait. You bring your family. The Noon Lions Club is also providing hot dogs and snow cones that day as well. So we hope everyone will come out and enjoy some of the activities we have going on.
Thank you. Mayor and council, next I'm going to have John McKay to come up and give us an update on all our CIP projects, and then following him will be Matt Julian to give us an update on something that related to an announcement that we made on late Friday.
Good evening, mayor and council. I've never felt more boring than having to follow up that wonderful announcement from Tiffany. The, I want to start out at the wastewater plant this week. We actually received earlier than expected the repair, the blower repair. They actually set, started setting that, started reinstalling that today. They expect to get that done over the next couple of weeks. The contractor is also expecting the first shipment for the rotor repair project that we bid out a while ago, should be showing up at his facility tomorrow. It'll be the first of a few. He's working at his facility, it's round Anderson. Make sure we got all the parts before he actually mobilizes for that work. The big CIP projects, I'm sure y'all have noticed, we've been paving over the last few weeks. We're up to 17 blocks, last time I counted, that are paved, with about eight more blocks prepped, ready to go. Obviously, we couldn't pave today during the rain, but we're moving forward over there in that, especially over there in that Old Town area. As we're moving out, though, I just want to do a general reminder to everyone, keep an eye on Facebook. That's where we're putting out any water outages for water tie-ins on the CIP project. I know we have some, we have one, maybe two, coming on Wednesday. So as we find out more about that tomorrow morning, we're going to get it out on Facebook then. The Cotton Lakes Gasland Project, it's been kind of waiting on Tex-OT to finish up, is waiting on Tex-OT to finish up their left turn lane project. We're trying not to, we don't want to interfere with them, so we're through the cold, cold months, so all's good. The water well and the water tower, we're still playing in contracts and permitting for the water well, they're doing actually a temporary, they call it a construction well, so they have water themselves out there while they're drilling, so we're working through the permitting on that. But everything's rolling forward. Y'all have any questions?
What's the projected finish-up date on the wastewater plant?
On these current projects?
Yeah.
I would suspect the blower, next couple of weeks, we're waiting on a control panel, that's all we're waiting on, but that should be shipping out this week. That's electrical work, they can get everything else done. On the rotors themselves, I'd probably say the end of June before they're actually in, installed and commissioned. So we're...
We finish those up, it's going to leave us in pretty good shape on the plant? Or do we have another major project on it?
That plant always needs a little bit of love, I'll be honest.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Matt, you want to come up and give us an update on our water well that we had to shut down?
Sure. My name is Matthew Julian. I am the chief water and wastewater operator for the city. Been here about 17 years. On Monday, May 6th, we did our normal routine distribution samples for E. coli in California. We're required to do these once a month out in our system, so we pulled four samples that Monday. Those samples were preserved in our sample fridge until Tuesday, when the lab picks them up and takes them to Huntsville, to their lab. We received a phone call about 5:15 Wednesday afternoon that one of those sample sites had a positive sample. Now that doesn't mean the water itself is contaminated, it just means that your sample was bad. The back tea test that they do is very sensitive, and it's either a pass or a fail. Things like high wind, fresh-cut grass, humidity, someone walking a dog, you drop the cap, it's going to fail. That's just how sensitive it is. So we received notification on Wednesday. On Thursday morning, we re-sampled that location, plus one upstream and one downstream, just to make sure that our water system is safe. Included with that, we're required to sample every water well that's in service. So we did the water wells and the distribution samples on Thursday, and we took them to the lab. On Friday, about 12:05, we received a phone call that everything in the field was good, everything passed, but one of our water wells tested positive for E. coli. At that point, we made sure the well was turned off and isolated, and it was not used all weekend. Since Friday, that well has been flushed, it's been disinfected, and it's been... Since Friday, that well has been flushed, it's been disinfected, and it's been re-sampled. We pulled samples this morning, took them ourselves to the lab, and we should hear tomorrow at lunchtime whether they're good or not. Once the sample is passing, everything's in compliance, and we're okay. If the event that it doesn't pass, we still keep it offline, and the state has given us 180 days to provide them with a passing test. I'm fairly confident that we'll get good news tomorrow. In the case we don't, we will re-disinfect, re-flush, and re-sample until we have a good sample for our well. That's where we are.
And if I remember correctly, the well just pumps the water up, and then we shoot that water to the treatment center?
Yes.
Which is then treated, so...
Yes. At our treatment facility, we do use the chlorine, and it kills any bacteria in the water. All of our chlorine readings for the week have been really good, really strong, so we're fairly confident our water is safe to drink.
Just out of curiosity, because as a kid, I probably had some big grand scheme that the phone, like the presidential phone rang. What does that mean, you're waiting on the phone call? Just literally, they're calling your cell phone and saying...
So the lab, they started this test soon as we got there, and it takes about 24 hours for the test to finish. So we'll get a phone call tomorrow with whatever the result is, pass or fail.
They're not getting your cell phone, or they call the city hall, or...
Uh, they... So the form that we send with it has the operator that pulled the samples' information. It also has the city information, too. So they'll call one or both of us until they get a hold of somebody.
Like the bat phones ringing?
No, we don't have that phone.
Don't have a bat phone. Can't have a bat phone, sorry. And we'll be sure to let council know, as well as we'll put something back out on Facebook about it, too. Any other questions, council?
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate your help. Mayor and Council, next item, I just want to make sure that you and the public knows. So the next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, May 27th, which is Memorial Day. City Hall and all non-public safety departments will be closed that day in observance of Memorial Day. And so generally, we usually ask you to cancel that meeting, however, there is some business that we need to take care of. And so we have moved that meeting to Tuesday, May 28th, same time, same location. So just to make sure everybody knows, we're going to have a meeting. Our regular scheduled next meeting will be on Tuesday, May 28th, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers.
Any reports from council, boards and commissions? All right. Seeing none, I just have one thing to mention here. I believe it's Wednesday, the law enforcement torch run for Special Olympics will be coming through Navasota, coming from Tomball then on to Bryan. And I believe our old standby, Mitchell, is going to probably be running in that. But the public is invited to join in that, and you meet it, I believe, at the Navasota Center about 2:00. If you want to run through the Navasota portion, you're welcome. Public is definitely welcome. And also, around 2:30 or so, if you want to be around downtown, right up the Washington and La Salle kind of area, to cheer on the runners, some of which will be coming from Tomball and others that will be heading on to Bryan. So need to come out and cheer them on. And again, that's Wednesday.
Mayor, council, also, you had before you put something, a little flyer in front of your chair there. So on Saturday, June 22nd, the city of Navasota will be hosting the First Annual Juneteenth Community Picnic. That will be held at Miller Park here in Navasota from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We ask that you bring your own picnic lunch and lawn chairs. We'll have DJ Slim Goldie will be there. We'll have yard games, inflatable slides, and Bite My Eyes snow cones. So it's a great event, being on Saturday, June 22nd, again, at Miller Park from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, which is a new event. Also, wanted to let you know that last week, we honored our Public Service Recognition Week, and so wanted to make sure that we acknowledged all of our departments that week. And so throughout the week, there were some special things that went on within the city. And so want to publicly thank all of our departments, all of our employees, part-time volunteers, full-time, public safety, public works, all of our employees for all that you do for the community and for the city. Your work is invaluable to us, and we appreciate all the time and effort you put into our community. Also, want to mention that this week, be looking out for the first survey to come out through Flash Vote. Think it's on May 15th, tomorrow, May 14th. It will be coming out tomorrow. Real quick questionnaire, so if you're not signed up yet, please go on to our website and sign up for Flash Vote. Again, it'll take just a couple of minutes for you to sign up, and that way, anytime the surveys come out, you'll get a notice of that survey coming out. Couple of just quick questions it'll be asking. Also, I want to make sure that we continue to keep you updated about the river. So the Navasota River, as you can tell if you've driven here lately, the water has receded. However, today, it felt like we got several inches of rain very quickly, and so that was all in the Brazos Valley. And so you can imagine, at some point, that's going to trickle its way back down here. So we could probably see a small rise in the levels. But again, nothing that we should have to worry about, but we will continue to monitor the Navasota River until all that water is gone. And mayor, I don't have any other things, other than what you mentioned about the law enforcement torch run. Again, that'll start at 2:00 PM at the Navasota Center. And if you want to cheer on the people that are running in that for Special Olympics downtown, they should be arriving around 2:30. That's all I got, mayor.
Okay, item number five. Consideration and possible action on Resolution 767-24 canvassing returns and declaring the results of special election held May 4th, 2024, at which were submitted 28 proposed amendments to the City of Navasota Home Rule Charter, ordering the adoption of charter amendments, and adopting the charter as amended.
Mayor and city council, the Texas Election Code states that we must canvass the election between May 7th and May 15th, which that's what we're doing tonight. And this canvas tonight, this item here is particularly just for those proposed amendments, and then the next item will be for the councilmen's positions. And then once this is approved, and we have a final copy, we will have to send an authenticated copy to the Secretary of State for their filing. This is just for the charter amendments that we're canvassing right now. And a new copy of the results are placed in front of you.
Mayor and council, a few of the numbers have changed. So if you could include in your motion to include the updated numbers, for example, the number of voters was 351 instead of 350. There were a couple of voting changes. It did not change the results, but the official results that came from the elections administrator did change a few numbers. So if in your motion, you could include the updated numbers, that would be helpful.
Most of them just changed by one number, like the unofficial had one more, but the official had one less. But it did not change the outcome of any of the results.
Those are updated numbers as received today?
The packet that you have in front of you, yes. We had to wait till today, the election board had to certify to the results today.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 767-24, with the updated numbers received today.
Second. Motion by Mr. Fulton, second. By Mr. Gessner to approve Resolution 767-24, with the corrections as provided today. Any further discussion? Law in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item six, consideration and possible action on qualifying newly-elected council members to positions one, two, and three, and administering the oaths of office.
Mayor and city council, the first thing we'll need to do is canvass the election results for the city council position. The Secretary of State will allow the mayor to certify to the results himself, or we can continue taking a vote like we have in the past. So if y'all want to do it by motion, then I'll need a first and second to approve the current totals that are presented to you also, that was placed at your desk tonight, with the updated results.
And those results are on pages six, seven, and eight of your packet. What Suzie is saying is that in the past, the council has, if I look to canvass the election results, which is really common, cities to do that. Technically, under the election code, the mayor, once he meets with the canvassing authority, which is the governing body, the mayor can certify the results by signing a form that's submitted to the Secretary of State's office. So it shows pleasures to...
I'd be willing to do that.
Or you can take a vote, which, if you, like I've done in the past.
Those seem equally as easy, so... Yeah, it's, so what is the action?
Just to approve the votes as presented tonight?
I move to approve the votes as presented tonight.
Second. Motion by Mr. Fulton, second by Mr. Harris to approve the election results.
Election results. Yeah, I like that better.
As provided, okay. Anything further? Anything further? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries.
The next step would be for the mayor to sign the certificate of elections and issue to the members, and we'll do one at a time. First one will be for Mr. Bernie Gessner. We'll give that one to him, and then I need Mr. Gessner to do a statement of officer, and then he'll do his oath of office. This doesn't have to be sworn in, you just need to read it and sign it. And then if you'll step over to Mr. Gessner.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, B.F. Bernie Gessner Jr., do solemnly swear...
I, B.F. Bernie Gessner Jr., do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of...
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of...
City of Navasota, City Council, place one.
City of Navasota, City Council, place one.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability...
And will, to the best of my ability...
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state.
And will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
That's your copy.
Next, if Mr. Stevens can come up, please. He'll give you your certificate of election first.
Yes, sir.
And if you'll come see me real quick, please. This is a statement of officer, if you can read that and then sign that.
Yes.
Yes, sir, you just need to, you don't have to read it out loud, you just need to read it in.
I've read it six times in the last couple of days.
And I'll place this in your file. All right, and then the judge will swear in his name.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Kenneth Stevens...
Do solemn, I, Kenneth Stevens, do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
Of the office of City of Navasota, City Council, place number two.
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
That's what I'm thinking, I just read it.
Let me just read it.
Let me take your seat.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Josh, he'll need to present you with your certificate of election.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Josh M. Fulton...
I, Josh M. Fulton...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office...
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office...
Of City of Navasota, City Council, place three.
Of City of Navasota, City Council, place number three.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability...
And will, to the best of my ability...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
Of the United States and this state, so help me God.
I just wanted to remind the council, with the charter being passed by the city council with the new amendments, Mr. Gessner, your position is for three years, so your next term will come up in 2027. Josh and Mr. Stevens, your next term will come up in 2026. Now Connie, did you need a picture of all three of them? You're okay, okay.
Item number seven, consideration and possible action on election of a council member to serve as mayor of the city of Navasota.
Mayor and city council, Home Rule Charter, Article 4, states Section 13, that the city council must elect among their members a chairman to serve as the mayor. So at this time...
Mr. Mayor, I move to elect Mr. Mayor Bert Miller as mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to elect Mr. Mayor Bert Miller as mayor.
Second. Bernie?
I think Bernie.
I think Bernie.
Motion by Mr. Fulton, second by Mr. Gessner to elect myself as mayor of the City of Navasota. Since I do that. Any further discussion?
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries.
Thank you.
Item number eight, consideration and possible action on the election of a council member to serve as mayor pro temp for the City of Navasota.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we nominate Josh Foltz as being the mayor pro temp.
Okay, we do not have a second, so I'll entertain another motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Bernie Gessner as mayor pro temp.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Fulton, second by Mr. Harris to appoint or to elect council member Bernie Gessner as mayor pro temp for the City of Navasota. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Congratulations, sir. Item number nine, consideration and possible action to approve Resolution 765-24 Designated Authorized Signatories for Contractual Documents and Documents for Requesting Funds Pertaining to the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation, CDBG MIT, Resilient Communities Program. Ms. Mary Bell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Texas General Land Office allocated $100 million in community development block grant mitigation, also known as CDBG MIT, and allocated those funds for the Resilient Communities Program. This program will help fund the development, adoption, and implementation of modern and resilient building codes and flood damage prevention ordinances that will ensure structures are built within the community that can withstand future hazards. At the, within the Financial Services Department and a few other departments, we've been working with our grant administrators, public management, to obtain funding from the General Land Office. The maximum we can receive is $300,000. They came back with an RFI, and they asked for a couple things, one of those being that the mayor and the city manager be designated as the authorized individuals to, to execute contractual and environmental review documents between the program and the city. Additionally, they also asked that the mayor, city manager, assistant city manager, and myself be authorized to execute the State of Texas Purchase voucher and request for payment form, documents that are required to request funds for the program. We're requesting approval on designating, designating these authorized signatories, signatories, sorry, for contractual agreements and to, and to fill out the form or to complete the form, as I mentioned, for this program.
What, what particular projects are being funded by this grant?
To update our, our ordinances regarding, regarding code, like building codes.
It's our, it's our subdivision ordinances as well as our comprehensive plan update.
Okay.
That's what the, what this grant will pay for.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Resolution 765-24.
Second. Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Mr. Fulton to approve Resolution 765-24. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item ten, consideration and possible action to approve Resolution 766-24 Amending the City of Navasota's Procurement Policy in Relation to Federal Grants.
Mayor and Council, this is one of the other items that are, that the General Land Office requested from us through our grant administrators. They requested that we pass, or that we incorporate a new grant procurement policy to incorporate updates related to CFR 200.318 through 200.3, through 200.327.
Mayor and Council, I did put before you the new revised policy tonight in front of you.
What are the significant changes between the whole policy and this one?
Not really anything, it's more about the closeout process.
It doesn't seem to even change any of the limits on it.
Excuse me?
It doesn't seem to change any of the limits.
No, those, those won't change.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 766-24.
Second. Motion by Mr. Fulton, second by Mr. Gessner to approve Resolution 766-24. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries.
Thank you.
Item eleven, consideration and possible action to approve Change Order Number Three for the Street Utility Bond Capital Improvement Program, CIP project, in the amount of $61,720.
Mayor and City Council, y'all remember, a couple of months back, I came to you during our workshop and said, these, especially those, the lines over there between Brosig and Hillside, we were having trouble being able to isolate the water. So what you're seeing is, this is the valves, that we've had valves and stops we've had to put in so far, as well as one additional one, so that we have it so the contractor can invoice it if used. So we had to put in five valves on Jutzen between Stacy and Schumacher, and then a few along Washington. What determined when we used a valve versus a stop was basically, would we have to use it twice? So the Jutzen valve, we were only going to need to use that once, we went ahead and did a stop, Victoria, y'all saw how many times this project crossed Victoria. So we put in a valve so we could turn it over and over and over again. Same thing with the Jutzen. The, I guess it's really that simple, the one thing I want to say is, we are aware of at least one more temporary stop that will be coming at Moore Street, Moore and Hillside. This is not the end of it, but we do not think that it'll go up to the full ten that I talked about in that workshop. So it is, it is working out a little bit better than we thought.
With this $61,000, is that pushing us way over budget?
By $61,000? Honestly, this is, this is not a budgeted change order. There's other areas that we have to, where we can control costs somewhat, but I think that this project will be a little bit over budget, but on $7.5 million, if we're not, you know, it's, yes, it is going to be over budget with this, but this was necessary work. I, I can sure code it any other way, but it's, this was not a budgeted item. This was, our system is old, the valves were old, and when we needed them, they let us down, so we had to add in a few extras. This wasn't part of the project planning process.
Well, it's less expensive than having to start from scratch.
Absolutely.
So.
Absolutely, and it's a lot less expensive than leaving those lines live in the ground underneath new pavement where they could continue to leak.
Rough guess, how, how old are those valves for replacement?
I found some of those valves in a map that has to be older than 1951, and I found one of those valves on a map from 1897.
It served its time.
Yes, sir.
We can put them in Horlot House.
That original one was actually drawn up by Mr. McNair himself.
Oh, wow. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Change Order Number Three for the Street Utility Bond CIP project in the amount of $61,720.
Second. Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Mr. Fulton to approve Change Order Number Three for the Street Utility Bond Capital Improvement Plan project in the amount of $61,720. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries.
Thank you.
Item twelve, consideration and possible action on appointments to the Board of Adjustment and Keep Navasota Beautiful Commission.
Mayor and City Council, currently, the Board of Adjustments has two positions that are open, and two alternate positions that are open, and staff is recommending that the alternate members be moved up, which would be Nancy Vodato to position two, and Matt Vaughn to position number five, and then recommending the new application from Alan Phillips as alternate position number one. And then we can, and then there's two appointments to the Keep Navasota Beautiful Commission.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and do the, um-
BOA.
The Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
Start with that.
I move to approve the recommendation.
Motion by Mr. Fulton, second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Keep Navasota Beautiful? These what now?
Two members.
Filling open slots?
Hang on just a second. Yes, we have two slots for three applications. On KMB?
Yeah.
Those two positions, they will come up again in September 2024. Yes. I don't know that we ever really had a full board to begin with.
We don't have a limit on that sort of degree.
I don't think there's a limit on KMB.
Don't think there is.
Nor the mayor or anybody.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we select Sarah Higginbotham and Ms. Woodard for the Keep Navasota Beautiful.
Second.
Tiffany Woodard.
Say the name, get me in on this.
Tiffany Woodard and Sarah Higginbotham. Yes. Sierra, I guess that's the way you pronounce it.
Yes, Sierra.
Sierra, okay. All right, we have a, did you make the motion, sir?
No, Mr. Harris.
Okay, Mr. Harris, sorry. Motion by Mr. Harris, second by Mr. Fulton to appoint Sarah Higginbotham, no.
Yes, Sierra.
Sierra Higginbotham and Tiffany Woodard to Keep Navasota Beautiful Commission for a position that would come up for, uh-
It'll come up again in September 2024.
September 2024, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item thirteen, consideration and possible action authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Burdette Consultants LLC in the amount of $57,750 for the Navasota Center and Pool Facility Feasibility Study Project.
Tiffany Byers, Community Services Director. So this is something that was originally discussed at the Parks and Recreation Board meeting back in February, really assessing what needed to be done in our parks, and the list is long. So it was determined that we needed to come up with a master plan for our parks. However, the pool, the Navasota Center, that area has some immediate needs that need to be addressed, so it comes down to, do we spend the money now, or do we do an assessment to really determine what that facility needs to be? So we started looking at consultant firms that could do a feasibility study of that area for us this fiscal year, so then we'd be able to put into the budget the items that are needed for next fiscal year. We were able to find funds, there was a marketing position that wasn't hired this year, so those funds are available to be able to hire Burdette to do that feasibility study. That will include coming in, doing the, the design, getting community input, so community feedback will be important to this process, which is why we're wanting to go ahead and do it now, so we have time to do those things before the next budget cycle. So we're able to put the items we need to address the pool issues, the Navasota Center, and Burley Park. So what we are asking is authorization for the city manager to enter into an agreement with Burdette to do that.
City, we've worked with Burdette before.
We have, so back in 2013, when I worked for the city the first time, Burdette had come in and done a park study for August Horse Park at that time. So they're familiar with our area, they actually were one of the only firms who actually came here and visited us to give us the estimate.
Tiffany, I don't know, is this question, can you answer, since you just knew on the job and everything, it may be a question for Jason here. In the council, do we actually need to spend $58,000 for someone to come in and tell us what we need, when we can just about pinpoint what we need ourselves? I mean, and to see, I can name quite a bit of things that we can be doing with $58,000 instead of hiring someone else to come in and tell us what we think that we may need, or what they think we may need when we're here in the community and we know what we want and need.
Yes, so what Burdette's going to come in, similar to what we will be doing next budget year, is doing a, a parks master plan, they're going to do community engagement, they're actually going to reach out to the community and find out what the community's wanting. We, we're not, we don't have anybody on staff that has the expertise on architectural design, what square footage would need to put anything there, and determine what, what's the best use for that location. They'll have, as I said, community involvement, community engagement sessions, as well as meetings with council, to figure out what, what are some ideas, and then look at the cost, what cost is associated. And this is specifically for that, that whole block. And so your Parks Board that you've charged with doing recommendations came and met and agreed that that's, that's a primary area that we need to first start focusing on, and we had a workshop, the council was presenting the same information, and we left from that, from that workshop and went moving forward, because we were charged with identifying a company to come in and do the consulting to provide us with feasibility study and what would be the best use for- I know that we had a workshop on this, but I don't think that we actually voted and said, let's create a park area up there, up on Brulee.
There's currently a park there.
There's currently a park there.
Right, but from what, what does we actually wanna try to study on, on the feasibility study? You're trying to do what?
So we need to determine, are we gonna keep the pool like it is? Are we going to look at aquatics facility there, or are you gonna want to remove the pool altogether and put a gymnasium in there? Do you want to add a splash pad instead of a pool, or splash pad along with the pool? Those are things that we need to look at and determine what's best use for the facility.
Shouldn't we decide that first before we have a study?
No, sir, the study is what will determine what is the best use for that location.
And then Burditt has the engineers and the architects that can determine what's feasible or what's not even feasible, right?
Correct.
They'll do community studies and things too, to where people can come in and workshop and tell us what they would like to see there, so that way we have that community feedback as well. Then they'll take what the community says and come up with a plan to move forward, and that'll include the design.
Plus, if you don't do these things, you gotta have those kind of things done before you can even think about applying for grants.
Correct.
Okay, well, just my feeling is that I'm a big proponent of quality of life, and I've been living in Navasota here all my life, and I wanna see things for the kids to do and things for adults and older people, but at the same time, I want them to be able to say, this is our town, I want input on it, instead of we're going out thinking that this is good for them, instead of getting input from them first to see is that location even something that we should think about. It may be another part of the town, that's what I'm talking about. Who picked this location to say that this is what we're gonna do?
So staff picked it based on the immediate need because the swimming pool needs to be addressed.
But immediately?
Correct, yeah, 'cause I mean.
Losing how many gallons of water?
Yeah, so we're losing water there, we keep having issues with the plumbing, and it needs to be totally remodeled.
It's not ADA.
It's not AA compliant, we need to address the pool issue because it continues being the issue, we keep putting a Band-Aid on it and kicking the can down the road, it can't keep kicking down, we need to address the issue, determine, are you going to do something with the pool, create a whole new concept, are you gonna fix what you have, redo it? You've gotta do something with it, and this is immediate need.
So I guess my point, back to the original question, is we're gonna pay someone $58,000 to come in and tell us that?
No, sir, they're going to facilitate everything and get the architectural design, once the community and council's involved with what they would decide they want to do.
This is just my feeling. I think that administrative staff should be doing that instead of going out paying $58,000 to get a feasibility study to telling the city of Navasota citizens what they need in that location.
We do not have architects, we have a graduate engineer.
We don't have to have architect, we can study getting people together, because Navasota's got a lot of good people here and smart people. We don't have to keep going out of town paying this humongous amount of money trying to get people to come in and tell us what the citizens of Navasota need. I'm against this, I'm, you know, that's, I'm just one vote, but I'm voicing my opinion there.
Without something official like that from professionals, we are not able to apply for grants. We had a phone call with TPWD this week, and there's a grant we could apply for, but you have to have those plans and everything in place before they'll even consider you.
I'm not saying that I'm really against it, but I'm just saying that the way that we're going at it about it, I think that we need more participation from the community. This is the community town.
But that's what this is gonna happen in this.
But seem like to me, make it make sense to me. Seem like that we've already identified the location without the general public input. Is that true?
That is correct.
So we're gonna have the general public come in and say, this is what we're gonna have it at, you have no say over that?
That's what, because that's the location, ideally, 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 staff doesn't wanna start there. We would love to start at August Horse, August Horse Park is our jewel of this community. We would love to be able to go out there and start adding to that park, but we can't. We have to focus on this one area, it is the most immediate need. The Navasota Center is an area that our community goes to and loves to be able to go to and rent and use. It needs updating, sir, it is unreal what issues we have just with the Navasota Center just in general, it's not ADA compliant, it has leaks, it's not been updated in I don't know how long. The swimming pool is leaking 300,000 gallons of water.
Where did this come from? Give me some, something that were back that are 300,000 gallons of water, I mean, where does that come from? Because this past winter, I took the pump myself, each week to ride by, the swimming pool had a cover on it. The cover had synced in the water with leaves and everything on it, so it never did, water was always on top of the cover, so that tells me that the pump was running or the water was continuing running because if it was the leak, the water.
No, sir, it automatically filled, Jennifer, can you come up here, please?
Jose can tell you about how that pool works.
Mr. Mayor, Jose Cornillas is the Polywar Director. So the reason why you didn't see that during the summer, during the winter is because the leak, we think and they see that, you know, above, on top of the pool somewhere where the, we can't really identify it exactly, we can, we're actually working on that, but it starts at the top of it. So as soon as we reach this.
So you're saying it's not underneath the bottom?
It's not at the bottom of it, it's kinda like between a foot, because that's all we lose, we lose about a foot. And so in order to keep it, I think Mr. Weeks forgot to mention that, we move some water during, when we use it, not during the winter. So when you say we keep it going, every month we use about 300,000, we fill up like every month to keep it going during the months of use, like right now.
So it only leaks when the pumps are running? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, when you fill it up, so it comes from the top somewhere, it's somewhere on the top within a foot from the surf, from the top of the pool is when it leaks. So it gets to a point where it doesn't leak anymore because it's, I think it reached the limit. Let's say, we think the leak is like I said, within a foot or something like that, there's a reason why you didn't see it happen during the winter.
And how do we fill the pool up? How's the pool get filled up?
So the fuel is automatically filled right now, so you never really actually see that because it keeps filling automatically.
So it's almost like a float switch? So if it hits that level, then it's gonna automatically fill up? So you'll never see it drop because it will continuously fill itself up, does that make sense? That's correct, and then it will continue to leak.
While it's being used, but when it's not being used, it's gonna get to that level and just sit, so that's why the cover had sunk and leaves was on top of it and water was inside the cover.
Right.
So it's not very deep, so you can't identify a leak there, or no one looked at it or?
We tried, we actually hired a professional to do it last year, Ryan did, and they couldn't find it. We helped Anna go on new facilities, she has a lot of experience in aquatics, so we're actually trying to work on that, and we really haven't actually identified one area because we don't, we don't know, it's kinda hard to identify without ripping the concrete in, look at all the system, or how the system work. It is very difficult to find it.
How old is that pool?
Eighty years.
Say again?
Eighty years.
WPA.
But just to also point out that the pool was redone about 20 years ago, totally redone, so it's not really an 80-year-old pool, it's, the pool is 25 years old maybe.
A minor.
Yeah, well, I think it's all, I would assume they did the, they had to dig the whole pool out, right? Because they put the baby pool in, or the little, I mean, it went from the lap pool to now they added, anyway. Yeah, it was a lap pool, and then they added the little square one in the back in that 2000 time period. So, anyway, it's a, contrary to the 80 years, it's never been that.
It was originally built 80 years ago. WPA built it and held up for quite a few years.
It's not just that, Mr. Mayor, also, you know, when we keep filling it, the chemicals, we used a lot of chemicals during the summer to keep it, because we're basically replacing the water once a month. And we do have actually a lot of those numbers, if y'all need to have some of those numbers, or how much chemicals we're actually using instead of, when it works properly.
Just out of curiosity for the grant that we, that could be applied for, if we didn't get that grant, we're looking at what would that grant be, 150,000, 250,000? If we don't spend this money, then we lose out on the potential of getting a grant at X amount. Do you have any idea what that number is?
Do you remember, Chris, how much it was?
Of 1.5 million, I wanted to know what's the max? I can look that up real quick, but it was pretty substantial.
Substantial, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, it would make a huge dent in what we need to do, I mean.
We did meet with the grant consultant twice, just trying to see if there's any way we could apply for funding this year, and kind of both times came back to the fact of, no, we really have to have a conceptual design in place before we move forward with anything. And so, you know, they said in the future, once the study's complete, if we decide that we wanna pursue funding, that we could come back and apply for it, but this year wouldn't be the best year since we don't have that in place yet.
Right, okay. And did we have any, you said, I think, that no one else had agreed to do the project? Like, there was no amount from any other firms?
We did get, we sought amounts from, I believe, six different firms, Burditt came in at the lowest price, but they also, like I said, actually came out and visited to make sure that that price was.
Actually, Mr. Burditt came out himself.
And they've had a history with this city before as well.
Yeah, it's a lot of money, you know, it's a lot of money to come out of pocket, but I think it's needed in order to progress whatever the next steps are, other than tearing the pool down.
I mean, the biggest thing is that our parks and everything have limped along, we have some great, great areas, but if we don't start doing the things we need to do to bring them up to code, to bring them up to ADA, all of those things, we're gonna be left behind, we can't fully utilize them.
We're already left behind.
We are already behind, there's a lot of great grant opportunities, you know, we hear that a lot, apply for a grant, but they wanna see that you have these plans in place, you know, a lot of them are very competitive. So now is the time, if we're gonna start actually putting money into parks and things like that, I mean, we've gotta get there.
And also, we'll have relationships already set with Burditt for the next steps.
Exactly.
That are after that with all of our, the whole park system.
Right, then we'll be able to do a master plan for the rest of the parks as well.
I look at that as, it is kind of a springboard there.
Yeah, and we also, just, so we did, when we reached out to them, we did talk to them about, hey, we're gonna be looking, putting a master plan in the budget for next year. And the reason in your packet here that we said that we're planning on budgeting 75, out of all of the consultants, that 75 was the lowest one that they were actually willing to do, so, and they ranged all the way up to, I think, over 150, 200,000, so, you know, Burditt is well-known in the profession for parks, I think they'll do a great job, we did when we met with them, we explained to them that we want community involvement, we want council involvement, and they understand that, they understand that concept, and that's generally how they handle most of their studies. So definitely we'll have that involvement to determine what the best use of that location is, ultimately, it'll be council's decision of where we move forward with it.
To Mr. Harris's point, how do you think that they will get, engage the community to give their feedback, just?
So.
Work with them before possibly?
So I know when we did the August Horse Project before, back in, I think it was 2013, we actually had community meetings, so they would have, you know, meetings, invite the community in, they'll have somebody facilitate that meeting, they'll ask different questions to kinda gauge what the community wants to see in that area, what things are most important to them. Sometimes they'll have them set five priorities and, you know, rank them, that way we get a better idea. I can sit here and think what I wanna use for that facility, but, you know, really, we serve the community, so we want their input, and Burditt was very good about that back in, I think it was 2013, doing that.
My memory of that was that I was really impressed with the way they ran the town meetings, that they did it on a floating type thing where they had stations set up and the people went to the stations rather than sitting up grouped down at a table and saying, okay, what are your ideas?
Yeah, you went and put sticky notes on stuff.
It will also include an electronic survey component too, for people who may not be able to come to a meeting but still wanna have input, there will be a survey that they can complete to provide input.
And they provide for a town meeting and also several meetings with the staff.
Yeah, I think it's certainly worth it to spend the money to see what are our best options. I know that the citizens will tell us what it is that they wanna see, but to have somebody actually put it together, and James, I think what you're talking about is having a staff person do that versus having a firm that that's all that they do will give us a better presentation of how we can move forward to make things better.
Councilman Phillips, I understand what you're talking, saying and everything, but, you know, when you, when you start reading stuff and looking at things and more questions and more questions pop up, to kinda piggyback off of what I just said right there, this $58,000 wasn't in the budget, but, you know, it was proposed to hire a marketing and media person. I mean, what happened to that, that you're gonna take that money and pay this consultants with? I mean, at that time that we had the budget, I guess you said that we needed it, and now you wanna take that money away and pay your consultants to do a feasible study?
So, so based on the way the charter's written, you do authorizations for budget at the fund level, and the city manager has a capability to move those funds within the general fund. And so you asked for me to bring to you where we can find money, that's not the only source, that was just a source I went to. As we remember back through the budget process, I said that we knew that we were hiring at the very last, when the budget was presented, the marketing communications person was leaving, and I told council I would not hire that position until I had somebody on that determined they needed, we needed that position. We've had turnover now twice in that position, and we're still not at that position where the new marketing person that I feel comfortable with hiring somebody, so there is gonna be a savings this year in that. And that position, when we looked through the budget process, was an ongoing, continuing position, and so when we looked at our financial outlook for five years, it continued on. And so since we're not filling that position, we have funds available for me to move to pay for this one-time cost item this fiscal year. If council doesn't like that answer, we also have, I know that our Development Services Director came to you a couple of weeks ago, and we have sell a property that was not budgeted that we're going to additionally get about $80,000 in funds that we didn't even budget that we're gonna have. So we have available funds to do this expenditure.
So if we have available fund, we won't, oh, well, I'm not gonna say what I want to say.
Well, it's frustrating to have so many needs and only so much money to take care of, but you gotta start someplace.
Yeah, well, I guess, once again.
And so since we're not filling that position, it had, we have funds available for me to move to pay for this one-time cost item this fiscal year. If ca- if, if council doesn't like that answer, uh, we also have, uh, I know that, um, our, our development services director came to you a couple of weeks ago, and we have sell a property that was not budgeted, that we're going to additionally get about eighty thousand dollars in funds that we didn't even budget that we were going to have. Uh, so we have available funds to do this expenditure.
So if we have available fund, we won't, oh, well, I'm not going to say what I want to say.
Well, it's frustrating to have so many needs and only so much money to take care of, but you got to start someplace.
Yeah, well, I guess, uh, once again, you know, I, I think that I have requested it several times to, uh, just let council have a workshop, sit down and, and let the council talk among themselves and see what each council is really want to see toward the city of Navasota. Because once again, my interpretation is that the council sets the direction to the city manager and the submit, and the city manager carries it out. And I'm just saying for James is that the location that we want to spend this amount of money at might not be the best location. So you know, it just seemed like that we're sold on this particular spot.
I, I think that's the difference, at least for me, is that we're, we are specifically talking about the pool, where it is, how do we fix that? As opposed to where are we going to put the new gymnasium that may be coming to town? So it's not like, uh, we're not just looking for something new that's coming in. We are, we want to know what's going to happen with that pool, what do we do to fix the pool?
But we're going to pay someone fifty-eight thousand dollars to tell us what to do with the pool?
It, it's not just the pool, council members, it's, it is the Navasota Center, it is that whole block because.
And the park, the, and the plaza.
The pool house is not AD compliant, it's got, we can't even, we're not, we, we should not be utilizing the top rental rooms because it, it leaks. Um, there, there are a lot of maintenance issues that have not been going on over the years that we need to address. So it's not just the pool, it's the whole facility.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but that's the reason I'm saying is that before we hire someone, I'm stuck on this fifty-eight thousand dollars, before we hire someone to come in and tell them what we need, we as a group, I'll sit down and try to talk among ourselves to see is that the direction that we want to go? Cause right now, I hadn't voted on that's the direction that we want to go, and we're talking about spending fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Well, we also, we, we charged the Parks and Rec Board with giving us a recommendation, and that's what they recommended.
But we still haven't, as a council, agreed to go that direction. And we're talking about spending fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, it, so a, a couple of things, so I want to, Councilmember Harris, I want to also address, and I'm going to have, look at Carrie, too. So, um, I know that you've mentioned you, for all council to get together and to have a discussion. We definitely can make that happen, but it's, it's not as easy as you think due to open meetings. We have to have an agenda, and you have to put on there what you want to talk about. And so, uh, we just can't put on there, um, meet to discuss whatever council wants to talk about. That, that's, we have to put in detail what like that.
I'm sorry, I don't know what that has to do with, with this specific item that we're talking about.
Cause I think, so I think Councilmember Harris wants to have a meeting so we can talk about this.
Not only this, everything in general, I mean, because.
We're getting off, we're getting off topic, so we need to, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that the, that we authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Burdette Consultants LLC in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the Navasota Center and Pool Facility Feasibility Study Project.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Gessner, to authorize city management as, as the motion's been stated. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
No.
No.
Those against?
No.
Have that noted, okay. Uh, motion carries. Consideration of possible action on the first reading of ordinance ten forty-five dash twenty-four relating to speed zones, which specifically designate additional areas along State Highway ninety. You and city in Navasota, in which rates of speed of thirty miles per hour or more are authorized.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening. Lupe Yozado, Development Services Director. Um, this is item fourteen. Um, so basically, uh, just want to do a, a brief summary. In October of two thousand twenty-two, Tech dot initiated a speed zone study for State Highway ninety. Uh, the study obviously included all of the portions of Highway ninety that are within, uh, the city of Navasota city limits. Uh, the study has finally been finalized, uh, it goes, uh, it's not just a local regional thing for Bryan. Uh, they also have to send it to Austin with their district board and, and get more approvals, and it, it gets scrutinized and reviewed multiple times, at least according to our Tech dot representative, uh, at the Bryan office. Um, so the, the speed study was finally, uh, finalized for State Highway ninety, and that started at Highway six, um, you know, where Annie's and Shell Station is, and it went all the way to Anderson. Uh, and of course, uh, tonight, we're specifically focusing on that small portion that's within the, the city of Navasota city limits. So the proposed changes are to change the limit fifty miles per hour to forty miles per hour. The attached ordinance, um, included in your packet, uh, the template was provided by Tech dot, and, uh, our legal counsel amended it to fit our, um, template that we normally use. And that has been approved by both, um, our legal and the Tech dot rep. There's also a map, uh, attached to the ordinance, kind of confusing. Uh, I know that our Tech dot rep always tells us that these maps are always backwards in a way. Um, but, but if you look, there's that top line that says what the current speed limit is, and then right under it says what the proposed limit is. So generally, it doesn't really, I mean, it's a big impact, fifty to forty, uh, that, that's definitely a little bit slower, but I think with the school zone there, it's important to, to have a little bit reduced speed, so.
Then Tech dot actually will come out and replace the signs, we don't have to worry with that.
Uh, yes, yeah, that's the one thing I forgot to note, uh, once, once the ordinance is approved and finalized, Tech dot themselves will come out and replace all of the signs that are impacted, so.
And there's a cutout in there for, for the school zone, the thirty mile per hour.
Correct, yes, that's correct.
Chief, you have any comments on that?
Don't speak your ticket, we'll listen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the first reading, ordinance ten forty-five dash twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fulp, second by Mr. Gessner to approve on first reading, ordinance ten forty-five dash twenty-four.
Mayor and council, just want to briefly also remind you, the reason it says first reading, uh, is because, um, because the charter amendments were approved tonight, um, you actually have to have a second reading on these. In, in May, on May twenty-eighth, to just make sure.
We have to submit to Secretary of State to get final approval, so.
So the next step, uh, the next step will be a letter from Mayor Miller, a certifying the authenticated copy of the charter that will be sent to the Secretary of State's office. And then once that's done, we'll, we'll get that done before the next meeting. So in the future, the next meeting, ordinances will just be read on one reading.
Okay.
A few more weeks to go fifty.
All right, got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, out of the carries. Item fifteen, consideration of possible action on the first reading of ordinance ten forty-six dash twenty-four relating to speed zones, which specifically designated additional areas along State Highway one oh five in Navasota, in which rates of speed thirty miles per hour or more are authorized.
Mayor and council, again, the same study from October two thousand twenty-two, they studied State Highway one oh five from the Navasota River Bridge to State Highway six. Uh, that study was complete, and there is significant changes along, uh, that stretch of roadway. The, the big changes start at County Road four twenty-three, a little bit outside of the city limits, uh, goes from sixty-five to sixty. Once it hits Fairway Drive, it goes from sixty-five to sixty. Uh, Veterans Memorial remains at fifty-five, uh, forty miles per hour, beginning at Clayton Street. And then this is probably the biggest change, is from Clayton Street all the way to State Highway six, Peter Road will be thirty miles an hour. Currently, there's like a thirty, uh, forty, thirty-five, and then you're going through downtown, it's thirty. And then once you get right past the, uh, Angels Car Wash, it jumps up to forty, so all of that now will be uniform thirty mile an hour. So, um, again, I think there's just a lot more traffic in town, so I think that'll be a, a great deal, um, to ensure pedestrian safety, too. We get, there's a lot more walkers and bikers, I've noticed, uh, going up and down Washington, so.
And this is again from two thousand twenty-two, which we didn't really have Pecan Lakes as we know it, right?
Yeah, it was getting there, but not quite as, as what it is today, for sure.
Is there any anticipation that they would do another study?
Well, I think it started in October two thousand twenty-two, uh, but obviously they run the date, they run all the data and everything, and I know that was one of the things that, when, when we meet with them on a monthly basis, I told them that I was going to go out there and drive, uh, multiple times across that thing to, to make sure the speed was right.
It was really done in.
Twenty-three.
Yeah, twenty-three, summer twenty-three, so the study was done.
Okay, I got you.
I move to approve ordinance ten forty-six dash twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, question?
Yeah.
Lupe, when do this take effect?
So the ordinance, as I mentioned, two readings, so the, the ordinance will be in effect, uh, next council meeting on the twenty-eighth. Uh, however, you know, depending on their, on their schedule for, with Tech dot, since they're going to be the ones that are going to replace all their signs, it all going to depend on when they can get out there, get their crews. Uh, and I'm sure they're going to have some kind of traffic mitigation plan as they replace all those signs.
So, so it will take effect once the signs goes up?
Once the signs are posted, I believe that's, that's how the law works, right, Mike?
And then we can probably do some kind of a awareness.
Yeah, I'm sure we can.
Social media or something that would just kind of, kind of give people a little heads up.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Instead of getting stopped. You made a motion.
I did.
Motion by Mr. Fulp, second by Mr. Gessner to approve on first reading, ordinance ten forty-six dash twenty-four. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, out of the carries. Item sixteen, consideration of possible action on resolution seven six eight dash two four, accepting the water, sewer, gas, street, and underground storm water drainage improvements in Hidden Hills Phase Two, Block Five, lots one through ten, and Block Six, lots one through eleven, except entrance signage, common areas, detention pond, and open channel storm drainage improvements in the city of Navasota.
Mayor and council, this resolution is for the acceptance of Hidden Hills Phase Two, uh, Ante Development LLC, uh, or more commonly, as we all, uh, refer to them as Black Rock Builders. They have substantially completed the infrastructure, uh, for Hidden Hills Phase Two, and just for bearings that's off of Laredo and North LaSalle. Uh, Phase Two consists of thirty-one single-family lots. Uh, the construction, uh, all the construction infrastructure has been inspected, uh, per applicable standards and the approved plans. I know, uh, one thing to note, the Public Works Department, John, Edwin, and others, they've done a great job on making sure that, uh, what we see on the drawings is actually what's built on the ground. Um, and so they've, they've done a really good job in making sure that all that is, uh, in the ground properly. Um, so the attached resolution will formally accept water, gas, sewer, street, and storm drainage infrastructure, um, and it'll be the last step, uh, or the last step will be, uh, planning and zoning, approving the final plat if this resolution is accepted tonight.
We already accepted Phase One, and there have been no issues from that, so.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we approve resolution seven sixty-eight dash twenty-four.
I have a question that I'll probably second.
Oh, what?
You can go ahead and second it.
You just seconded it.
Second, but I have to comment.
Go ahead, yes.
Um, accept the entrance signage, common areas, detention ponds, so who will maintain that?
Uh, that is, uh, homeowners association.
And there is an active homeowners association?
I don't believe, uh, currently, not yet, because, uh, I know the way HOA's work, the, the, the entire development has to be substantially complete, uh, for Hidden Hills Fa- uh, for Hidden Hills in general. I believe there are seven phases from memory, uh, so they still have quite a bit to go.
So there will be, never be a time that we need to accept the signage?
No, no, and, and, and actually in this phase, none of those improvements are even in the phase, but just for reassurance and making sure that the developer understands that that is not city responsibility. So we just like to leave them in there for boilerplate.
Very good.
Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Mr. Fulp, to approve resolution seven six eight dash two four. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, out of the carries.
Thank you.
Item seventeen, consideration of possible action on creating a subcommittee to decide best use of the Horlock House Art Gallery and History Museum, as well as immediate repairs that are needed.
Mayor and council member, you have one, um.
Yeah.
Public comment.
I mean, you, you, okay, you, you can do it now or, or, whatever you like.
Come on up.
You've got three minutes.
Thank you. Kathy Wells, Kathy K. Wells, um, Navasota, and I'm also the chairman of the Two Rivers Heritage Foundation and the secretary for the Grimes County Historical Commission. I'm also the historical marker chairman for the county. And, um, I have two things. First of all, I'd like to, uh, request that Two Rivers Heritage Foundation be given an opportunity to include a person, um, to work with this subcommittee, if you would consider that. We have close working relationship with Chamber Director, um, Lucia Barra as well, I think she would welcome our input. Um, the second is, I do want to make a comment about Phoenix One, and if there are any decisions made about Phoenix One, since they, um, were discussed at the last time the Horlock was on the agenda, um, we feel like Phoenix One is overkill for a historic home, and, um, so we're hoping that you're not looking at going that route. Good, I see you shaking your head no, so I'm glad to, glad to, uh, see that, it's overkill and unnecessary. Um, and we do agree that the house should be repaired over a few years with only the initial work being what absolutely has to be done at this point. But I also want to add, and you can talk to somebody like Lee Stebbins, that, um, who owns the Terrill Home, but the historical commission is a lot more concerned about what we see, what they, people see from the outside in terms of retaining the marker. And so what you will see with a lot of the historical homes, now I know this is city-owned and not owned by a private citizen, but they are going to do a lot more, be a lot more concerned about the work they're going to do on the outside of the house and what is seen than what they're going to do on the inside of the house. And I'm saying that because I think there's, um, the inside of the house is in pretty good condition, but it may need a lot of updates and things like that. But, um, we really need to, to worry about retaining the marker based on what people see from the outside. Um, I guess that's it, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Kathy. Mayor and council, um, at the workshop we had on the twenty-second, uh, of course, as Ms. West was talking, uh, Phoenix One Restoration presented to council some estimated cost. As you're well aware, they were, uh, north of one point seven million. Um, they did, uh, based on your request, they did send us a revised priority list, and so I think within your package, it didn't include, um, the prioritization, uh, color code that they provided. Uh, won't go over in detail on that. Uh, and since then, also, you'd asked me to, um, work with the chamber, so I met with, uh, the executive director, uh, Lucia Barra. She, uh, is unable to be here tonight, uh, but what she and I, uh, worked out is, um, that the chamber is, is still wi- willing and wanting, uh, to occupy that building. And so the idea is for the mayor to, um, create a subcommittee of two council members, uh, to combine with city staff. And then, um, the chamber is looking at, uh, creating a subcommittee of their board, uh, and working, uh, with, um, the executive director as a liaison, and us getting together and trying to iron out what that would look like moving forward. And that way, um, determine, will the city continue to own it, will we lease it, will, uh, we convey it to the chamber? What repairs, uh, would need to be made? Uh, what would, uh, the city's input, uh, on an annual basis be to help with, uh, maintenance? Uh, what would happen with the best museum? What would the, um, what would the, what offices would be incurred inside there? Would it be the chamber, would the chamber sublease it? Those type things, uh, the subcommittees would, uh, get together, uh, and try to hash that out so that we can move forward with what the next steps are in this process.
And the, the chamber could involve Two Rivers as part of that.
Again, um, yeah, so the chamber, uh, could definitely involve them, um, but, but ideally, it's two council members since we're the, we're either landowners and, and property owners of it. And then looking at the possible new tenant being the chamber, having some of their board, as well as their executive director involved in the communication, to trying to look and see what that, what would that look like, that relationship?
And based on interest, uh, uh, provided to. And based on interest provided to me, I would like to appoint Councilman Fultz and Councilman Harris to that subcommittee.
And just for clarification on my end, this, I think, from what I have heard directly from the chamber, they are looking at a, at a tenancy, and they're looking for the city to provide them with what the rules for that tenancy would look like. And so that's really what you're, I'm not gonna try to go through the priority list and say, yes, for sure, we need to do paint first thing and second thing, this-
Correct. So one of the main things that we need to look at is, if it, if it is gonna be the chamber's new location, we, parking. So we need to, even though that's not part of what was put in here, we need to talk about parking. And then looking at, what are the things that they need to successfully operate on a day-to-day basis? And then, moving forward, what would that look like? City, how much would we inject our hot funds for historical marker location? And chamber, what would you be able to help out on a maintenance portion? And that's, again, all of the day-to-day type operations, what they would look like is what we're trying to move forward with.
Okay. Part of the discussion also might want to be directed at, at the Horlock family as well, to see if they might want to participate in further restoration.
Okay. But, so, council, in public, we are not in favor of spending one point seven million dollars. That's just that, that we do not have that, or capable of-
Not unless one of y'all wants to write a check.
Look, do ya?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. All right, I believe we made it to the end here.
Item eighteen.
Item number eighteen is-
I think the mayor disappointed.
He disappoin-
Did you get it recorded?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure we didn't have to have a second.
No.
It's just an appointment.
Okay.
Consent agenda includes the minutes for April twenty twenty-four, municipal court report, April twenty twenty-four, and financials for the month of April twenty twenty-four. Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Mr. Fultz, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. That being the last item.
No, no, sir.
It's not the last item, like I just said it was. We are going into executive session. City council shall meet in executive session in accordance with Text Government Code, Section five five one point zero seven two, double liberation regarding real property for the purposes of discussion and deliberation regarding the city of Navasota's potential acquisition of real property for city projects and purposes. The time is seven fifty-three. Reconvene at eight forty P M?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city manager be authorized to negotiate and approve and execute all necessary documentation for acquisition of real property for city project purposes as discussed in executive session.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Stevens, second by Mr. Fultz. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries.
Need a little bit of coffee then.
Which item was it?
Okay.
That was, I'm sorry, that was item number twenty-one.
Eight forty. That's it.
Okay, we're here.